I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that our cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse in the City of Gaston YouTube. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on the Assistant City Clerk Jennifer Smith for the roll call, please.
Councilwoman Tolls.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Worthy.
Here.
Councilman Back is absent today. Councilman Wilson.
Here.
Cannon.
Here.
And Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to convene on this fine day. Father, we thank you for all of those in attendance today. We thank you also, Father, for those who have taken the opportunity to attend online. Lord God, we ask that you will continue to bless this great city, continue to touch us, Father, and lead our decision-making, Father God. Lord God, we ask you to continue to keep us safe during these very difficult times, Father God. We send out a special prayer, Father, for the world, Father God, in the current state that it's in, Father God. Father God, we ask that you will seize the opportunity to touch our hearts, Father God, and unite us across these challenges, Father, and through it all, we'll give you the glory, the honor, and the praise, for it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Education Recreation Committee with work session and the city council meeting that was held on March the 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of March the 18th through the 24th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations. We have unfinished business. We have a resolution that's ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2907 South 11th Street in District 6. This resolution was tabled for 14 days on March the 15th, and there's a recommendation from the building official to adopt this resolution. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Aye.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property located at 1543 Litchfield Avenue in District 1, Medford Carter Jr. and Ruthie Carter being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there one speaking favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We filed this case, this structure is partially burned, and we filed it in June of last year. There've been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the council? A move that we obey?
Circle.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property located at 612 Light Street in District 2, Kennedy W. Morris and Jason Patterson being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, there have been recent permits pulled on this and significant improvements. We're asking this case be tabled for 30 days. Thank you.
All right. What is the pleasure of the council?
Make a motion to table for 30 days.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table 30 days.
Item 11 through 12 are public hearings for resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens for demolition work that has already been performed. I'm going to call out the information for each of these, and anyone who wishes to speak may come forward. The first item is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement liens at 920 Avenue L in District 3, State of Alabama. The amount is $5,190. The next one is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien at 931 Fourth Avenue in District 5, State of Alabama, possible redemption rights of the state of Vandahl Chandler heirs to set estates are Jacqueline Huff, Eric D. Huff, Center E. Chandler, Autumn White, Brazil at $3,495. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to either of these resolutions? Is there anyone speaking favor? The chair will entertain a motion to adopt both resolutions.
So moved.
Aye.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt both items 11 and 12, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt both resolutions.
The next item, no action is necessary regarding this resolution on 310 Wilson Avenue in District 6 because the demolition cost has been paid by the owner. Our final public hearing is an ordinance adopting a 2021 edition of the International Fire Code. The ordinance also contain an additional provision regarding automatic sprinkler system. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this ordinance? Is there anyone speaking favor? All right, Chief.
Good morning, council. Thank you for allowing us to bring this to you all today to be voted on. I would like our fire marshal to come forward to take any questions, as this is his wheelhouse. If you have any questions of me, I am available.
Madam President, council, the state is about to adopt the 2021 International Fire Code, and we usually follow suit with what the state is doing. We did not adopt the 2018 with the building code. We are still under the 2015, so this is a double jump. I've talked with Mr. Harbison, he's in the process of looking at going to the 21 code to keep in line, so this is just a step in the directions that we will take. So if you have any questions, I'm free to answer them. If not, that's great.
Jason, can you elaborate a little bit more? I know we talked about this briefly a couple of weeks ago, but Appendix N, the sprinkler requirements for quote indoor trade shows and exhibitions? That's some light reading you got there.
One of the best books in the world, nobody likes to read, but for some reason I do. Appendix N, it's not just a sprinkler. What they did with Appendix N simply put most, if not all, I'm not going to say 100%, but most of what's in Appendix N is in the code, but it's in all different locations.
Gotcha.
So the intent was to try to create an area that could put it all together to make it easier for architects, designers, owners, and us, the reviewers, to find these things.
Sure.
I'm not aware, I've read over it real close and looked at it, I'm not aware of anything in here that's in addition to what's in the code already that makes it detrimental to anybody.
Gotcha.
It's just a matter of putting it where we can see it better and review it easier.
Gotcha. I just didn't, when you talk about the definition of a trade show, that hasn't changed as far as how it would impact?
No. The only thing that I think that it does is, there was a little bit of a loophole because of the way you had to dig around through the code to find all these issues, there were some loopholes that were created through the interpretation of the one reading. So by putting it together, it kind of takes that interpretation out to where it's what the book says.
Just clarifies it. But in layman's terms, you don't think this is going to have any sort of immediate financial impact on existing businesses?
The one area, and I looked at specifically that we had talked about, and I've been talking with a lot at the state level on this too, one of the things that's been kicked up is a lot of people were looking at, in a venue setting, if you have a booth over 100 square foot that has a ceiling, that's where the issue comes up.
You would have to have some sort of secondary sprinkler system.
Or drop the sprinkler down to that. It's already in the code.
Right.
It's already there.
Right.
You just have to dig to find it. So they put it in here to clarify.
Got it. All right, that's all I have.
Anyone else? Y'all make it easy. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. We have a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding between the Alabama Department of Public Health and the Gaston Fire Department, and this is for coordination of emergency medical service resources in the event of a mass casualty incident or a large-scale evacuation affecting East Alabama. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Madam President, could we go back to?
Yeah, I think we skipped 15.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
I'm sorry. If you want to vote on this one we just talked about, and then go back.
Okay. No, let's go back, we'll go back. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt item 15. On the, I'm sorry, item 14 on the fire code, international fire code.
We did that, but we skipped 15. The dish wireless.
Okay, well, let's just vote on that and I'll go back to the dish.
Okay.
This is item 16.
Item 16. We'll vote on item 16.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution under item 16 on the agenda, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Going back to item 15, this is a resolution.
I'm sorry, did we have?
I did a motion, I didn't hear a second.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Do we need to vote again?
I think we do.
We did, okay.
We do.
Okay, we'll go back to item 15. This is a resolution authorizing special use permit to the dish wireless, and this is for installation of their equipment and modification of the existing wireless telecommunication facility that's located at 748 Forest Avenue. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Aye.
Any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, we have item 17. This is a first reading. This is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property located at 2712 Shana Avenue in District 6. This is Don and Juanita Burke have offered to pay $300 for the property. This ordinance has been presented today for first reading, and the council will vote on it next week. Do we have any new business?
Madam President, I have one for the legal department for 2022. It's a 145 resolution authorizing lease agreement with Huckabee's Hope for Paul's Rescue. Ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution under new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent.
Okay, move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, do we have any department reports, committees, boards? At this time, we have citizen requests, Larissa's city service budget. Please limit your remarks to five minutes, please, and give your name and address for the record.
Say what?
I like to bring my book this time. I'm Larissa Suttles. I live at 2322 Hill Avenue, Alabama City, still part of Gaston. Now, I like to bring up something about the area in Oak Park. There's a, I think there's a city ordinance about loose dogs or whatever. There's a, I know there's an Alabama leash law. So I was told by one of the residents that they've been trying to contact the main society, whoever it was, about loose dogs just running, keep running in their yard and tearing up their property. They said he was old fool or something like this, so I told him I'd bring it up in the meeting. So if anybody have a resolution for that, I'd like to hear it. The other thing is about some repairments on the streets, potholes. There's people still asking me about the potholes. Now, and I see potholes. Now, if I could see them, I'm pretty sure everybody else can see them, even people that does the work on them. I'd like to show y'all something. Do everybody know what this is? Can y'all see that? Everybody's been starting to be accountable for what is going on in the city, especially out there on the streets. This is a camera. It runs as long as your vehicle is on. I don't want nobody talking about this and that, this red tape. They don't want to do things, if they don't want to do the job, they need to be replaced. Pumping simple. Any citizen can call in for anything in this city, they paying the tax in here. They shouldn't have to, I seen it myself. One of the libraries over there in this Gaston called Puddle Works, and it took them a week to come fill two potholes that tears up people car, cost they was over three inches deep. This don't make any sense at all. People don't want to do the job, let somebody else do it. They need to be replaced. There's something else I'm investigating on that's, that need to be held, somebody in public service, they need to be held accountable for it. So soon as it's finished investigating, all of y'all would know. The man need to do a shakeup, he really do. And can anybody give us, give me some answers about disorders on the dogs?
We had a meeting this morning concerned, there's a lot of dogs that are running around in the city, we know that.
Yes, ma'am.
There is an ordinance. We had a meeting this morning where we had the Humane Society's running over, so we made allowances for other dogs to be picked up, but we know that that's a problem, so it's being worked on.
Okay. Mr. Suttles, if I can add to Madam President's comments, you know, I've also seen a lot of disturbing reports of loose animals being shot in the Alabama City area, several folks. The two things that I want to clarify, number one, if something like that happens, it is absolutely imperative that you file a police report. You know, post it on Facebook for everybody to see. I know that's a platform that a lot of people use, but if we don't have actual reports of this stuff happening, because I agree, you know, those are tight quarters in some of those communities over in Alabama City. Those homes are close together, and if somebody's shooting dogs because they're coming into their yard, and there's kids in those neighborhoods, I mean, that's a, that is a public safety concern, but unfortunately, none of these people where these incidents are happening appear to be reporting it to the police department. You know, they'll make a post about it, but they're not actually filing a police report. So we need to make sure as citizens that we're diligent with making those police reports, because the police can't respond to something if they don't know it happened. I know a lot of people just expect the police to be everywhere all at once and to be there before they get called, but if you don't call the police, if you don't file a report, they don't know that it happened, number one. So just make sure that we're all being diligent about that. As far as the overall issue with the Humane Society and what Councilman Reed took action on today, basically, it's my understanding that our Humane Society is attempting to execute what they call a no-kill shelter, meaning they don't euthanize animals there. Their hope is to bring them in and get them all adopted back out. They don't euthanize them. And so as part of that goal or philosophy, they get full really fast, and so when the Humane Society is completely full, you can call animal control or Humane Society all day long, and they don't have anywhere to take the animals, you know? So that's what we saw, and for the last couple of months, we've been talking as a group, and again, led by Councilman Reed and Councilman Cannon, Councilman Worthy on the Public Safety Committee, you know, is, can we come in and perform some sort of temporary help to help the Humane Society who's overwhelmed until we can get control of this? Because it really all starts with spaying and neutering. You know, you've got to spay and neuter these animals. You think, yeah, you let a couple of, like the Humane Society, I think, they'll let 2% of their animals go without being spayed or neutered, adopted without being spayed or neutered. That seems pretty good. We're spaying, neutering 98% of our animals. The problem is, when you talk about a cat that can go, or a dog that may go into heat three, four times a year and can have multiple litters, you're talking about even at 2%, thousands of animals that can be reproduced on the streets by stray animals. So that's really how you got to fix it, you know, from the get-go. And what a lot of cities do is they require individuals, citizens, to register their dogs. If you register a dog that is not spayed or neutered, the license fee is $50 a year. If you register them and they are spayed and neutered, it's $5 a year, you know? So you're encouraging people to get their dogs spayed and neutered, so it dramatically drops that license fee. But that's the ultimate fix for this, is to spay and neuter all these animals so that they can't constantly reproduce on the streets. Now, in the meantime, what we did today, what just happened, was we approved a lease with this rescue, the name escapes me, I don't know, you might come off.
Paul.
Yeah, Huckabee's Hope for Paul's Rescue. So what we did was we gave them a lease on a city-owned piece of property right down there off of, what is it, 14th?
Jefferson Street.
Yeah, and.
1700 block.
Yeah, the 1700 block there, to where they can house more animals for the city while we're waiting on the Humane Society to adopt out the animals that they have, and then they would move them over to the Humane Society, the Humane Society would adopt them. So this was a direct response to what you're talking about. We went and got a building and signed a lease with a nonprofit, this Huckabee's Hope for Pauls. We signed a lease with them to take over this space and to house these extra animals until the Humane Society can get caught up or expand their services or do whatever. So that's a, that's something we've all been aware of, and we literally just took steps today to try to help that. So hopefully, we'll see some relief over there, I would think.
Okay, I just got a couple more things.
Before you get started. I know we're going to say much today, but since you're on the potholes and stuff, maybe you might could help me do something. 27th and Railroad Avenue and 28th and Railroad Avenue, where the railroad tracks go across the road there, at 2700 block, people's having been going around in a circle around there to get through those railroad tracks because they're so bad. I turned in the engineer, and he's got it, he's talked to him, to guess to his blue in the face. Man came and got me the other day, took me down there, and I said, sir, I don't know who to call. I said, I've turned it in. He said, here's a sign. I looked on that little cross, and there's a sign that gives you the number of the crossing there, and gives you the number to call to report that. So I was with the guy, he cut his phone out, and I watched him, he called him, and I called him, reported it, and man, sugar wouldn't do nothing but melt in your mouth when you talk to the railroad company. Them people is this gung ho, they gonna help you tomorrow. Well, month went by, nothing happened. I came through there again, I stopped, called that number again. Man, that guy was just as nice as he could be. We're gonna turn this over to somebody and took care of it. Month went by, nothing happened. Called him again, guy's as nice as he could be. Man, sugar just melt in your mouth the way he stop it to you. Still, nothing's been done. So why don't you go down there today, if you wouldn't watch the cars going around that, and see what you can help me do, because I've did everything out in my power to do about it.
I got a solution already. It's called Edward County, file lawsuit.
Because I did all I could.
They'll take care of it then. People don't believe in things until you put legal action on them, so.
You ain't never tried to sue the railroad.
Hey, that's a first time for everything.
Yeah, well, it'd be a first, because I guarantee you, it's been a million of them done, ain't no, the railroad are wonderful people. They get you where you want to go, but they ain't going to do nothing about that pothole till they want to.
Okay. The other thing I want to talk about, like Oakland State. Now, there's a road at Carroll and Lake. I wouldn't advise nobody even go down that road with a buggy and a horse. That road is tore up so bad, it's awful for Gaston even says this road. I mean, the curve that's supposed to be level with the asphalt is sticking like at least three, the four inches up. People tearing up their cars and everything. It is awful. I had brought this up to Councilman William, I had spoke with also Mr. Williams, the engineer. I don't know if he'd been out there yet, because we talked about several other things. And also, him and I spoke about the cemetery. They call it Lawn Cemetery, I still call it Flatwood, about the drainage in there also. And the other thing, a citizen asked me to bring up the property, I don't know the number on it, but it's a Bullard Stern Park. There's some old property there with buildings on it. Is there anything that the city can do, you know, do fuck those buildings or something to try to, you know, get somebody in them or something?
Are you talking about Garant Terrence?
I think that's the name of it.
Yes, sir. Circle.
Yes, size circle.
Yes, ma'am.
That's an ongoing, that, it doesn't belong to the city.
Okay.
And there's people who own it, so maybe you can get in contact with them to see if they can do something about it, but the city doesn't own that. We try to keep it up, and I think that's the one they put a fence around.
Yes, ma'am.
So that's.
At one time, there was a plan to try to redevelop.
There was, and in fact, there was a plan that was, we lifted the nuisance off of it.
We sure did.
So that they could, and the only thing that they've done since then is to put a fence around it, so.
Yeah, it was, it's owned by a private entity, and they were going to reopen them and try to refurbish them and bring them back to, and so we, the council lifted the nuisance on the property so they could move forward with it, but they haven't done anything yet.
That's the third private entity.
Right, absolutely.
We also talked about it. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
No, I was just saying, that's the third private entity we've had come forward with a plan and not followed through, so that's a, that's been an ongoing one.
Well, two more things. I want to talk about sidewalks.
You don't want over your time.
Well, he talking up. I did two more things, go ahead, quick. Mr. Wilson.
I knew you were going to say that, I should have stopped Councilman Wilson, but that's fine.
You gave me 10 minutes, I was, I was done.
Okay.
But anyway, I want to talk about sidewalks engagement, there are some uneven sidewalks. I need to know how high do a sidewalk needs to be to be uneven? I definitely want to know that, because you can follow anything that's a quarter of a inch or higher.
You know, you, of course, none of us up here are engineers. You know, I get that from Councilman William, we're not, we're not experts on everything that you're asking, and I'm quite sure offline, you can ask the engineer about the sidewalks, you can ask about the potholes, because, you know, he would have answers. We have, we have things in place for paving, all of that's going to be done and worked on. I know, you know, citizens won't, we just not, we don't operate a microwave service, so we can't do things overnight. That's, that's the process of government, period. So, but it's not that we don't know about those things, and it's not that they're not in the works. I think if you were to go to the city engineer's office, he can show you all the streets that need work on, so.
One more thing, and I'm going to let y'all go. This is about.
I might, what, where's, I might just end up barring you from speaking.
Oh, well, hey, we'll work on that.
Whatever. All right.
I'm still talking about the trash. Now, I'm going back to this trash.
Okay.
I mean, the people's either need to box it up or something, because when, like, the other day when the wind was blowing, I ended up with about fifteen pieces of trash in my yard.
You're a good citizen. Did you pick it up?
Yeah, I picked it up.
You're a good citizen.
Plastic and everything else. But my thing is, they putting it out there where the debris supposed to be.
Yeah.
If we can, uh, if I can pass by and see it, whoever has those jobs to, for me checking these houses and everything else like that, they can see it too. Why we can't put a sign there? Why we can't find these folks? I'm not running for a popularity contest, but hey, something need to be done.
We hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna leave this with you, Mr. Williams. Mr. Williams, I need to leave this with you. I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cole?
I knew I won't get that rest out. Good morning.
Yeah, now, just do like he do, just keep on talking.
I'm not gonna do, I'm not gonna do that either. Madam President and members of the council, uh, I am a neophyte, and I'm not as astute as you and your colleagues are with the powers of the council, but I do have several questions, and I hope they be addressed today, but if not, be addressed at some point in time. Our president mayor, when he served out his term, had been in office for sixteen years. The previous mayor who he, that preceded him was in office, I think, for about twenty-four years. So, that was forty years that we had two mayors that run this city. And my question comes to the point that if a mayor becomes incapacitated, ill, or whatever the situation is, and is out for several weeks or several months, who takes over at City Hall or who addresses those issues? If, I have, I checked with the city attorney, I checked with the clerk. There is nothing in law or anything that states if something happened, who takes over? So, my question was, is it the president of the council? Do you have a committee of department heads? You have some that been here thirty-five and forty years. There seems to be nothing in place, that if something happened to the mayor, something has to be signed or something there where, who takes over? There is nothing anywhere. So, since you are the legislative body, and we will have a new mayor in the next few months, we also have a new council, maybe something, you need to do something to address this issue, because nothing is there. Nothing is there at all. Some places, the president of the council take over. We have nothing here in place in Gaston that I know of. So, hopefully, you could do something, or some answers will come from somewhere. I know our mayor has been injured, I spoke to him this weekend, we talked, and he told me he has been in contact with individuals, you know, at City Hall. But I'm just wondering, what is the process? If something happened and the mayor's not present, who takes over? And if there isn't any legislation there, then maybe you as a council, I'm sure you all have the authority to do that. My second question, and possibly the third question too, to the council, is that, do you all have investigatory powers? The reason I ask that question, when I was in Birmingham, uh, there was an issue that came up concerning the police department. Uh, there was complaints against the police department, I know we have a civil service board here. But at this present time, before Dr. Arrington became mayor of the city, he was on the council. And they laid an investigation into the police, they brought folks, different things, the, the council passed legislation to deal with those issues. So, do you have investigatory powers? And also, do you hold hearings? And this goes back to, to Birmingham, Atlanta, and Montgomery. The city was getting ready to turn over their accounts to one of the banks, but there had been some complaints against the banks. The council at that time called for a hearing and had all the different presidents of the banks to come forward to answer questions to the council and the attorney on, excuse me, on these different matters. And at that time, the council made a decision on those. So, I know you may have powers that we are not aware of, but if we do, if you're able to just bring them out and let us know. My final question on that issue, not necessarily your powers, but dealing with the budget. Do the, do the apart, department heads, when you have your meeting, do they come before you and give their budget on how much it's going to take for them to operate for that year? Or do they turn it over to the mayor's office? And the mayor's office turn over the complete budget to the council, and you work on that? Because from what I know, and I don't know very much on the matter, when everything comes up, we hear that the council has come up with a budget. It comes before, you bring it up one week, the next week, you voted on it. But the citizen hadn't gotten a chance to get an input, ask questions, or whatever, as far as I know, and I don't know that much, so if I'm wrong, you can correct me on that. But these are some issues that are pressing, I think we need to know. And my final thing is, excuse me, a couple of years ago, Black Lives Matter was marching, and one of the things in the march, they were dealing with these Confederate statues. And I thought the council started some type of commission or something with some citizens to work out something, but I never did get the results. What did you do, or what was the decision made? Because there were plenty of complaints went on about the statues. And you did have meetings, but what was the outcome of those meetings? So, these are just some of the questions, you don't necessarily have to address today, but at some point in time, I would like to know. Thank you very much for allowing me this time.
Don't, don't forget to mention your, uh, since your time is.
I want you to do it, because you know, I, I'm going to script to the time, I'm, I'm gonna sit down.
Okay, well, I, I'll wait till my turn to talk, okay?
Okay. At this time, we have remarks from the council. Councilman Reed. Councilman Wilson.
Uh, yes, ma'am, I just, real quick, I'll say, just because it's fresh on my mind, and I'm a co-chairman of that committee, the Human Relations Advisory Committee did come out of the, the larger, uh, cultural, social movement of last summer. And while conversations about that statue were certainly a part of it, that was not the sole purpose of that committee. It was meant to have conversations that would generate recommendations to the council about how this could be a more equitable community, how we could live together. Mr. Settles? I was literally talking to Mr. Cole, and you walked right in front of him.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Uh, anyway, it was, it was meant to be a broader conversation about how we could have a more equitable community that included housing, education, access to financing, and those meetings are still ongoing. We hold them monthly and are very poorly attended, I might say. Um, but myself and, uh, Councilman Williams were, are still working on final recommendations that arose from that committee, so. Um, as far as the, um, other issues in front of us, I want to first start by thanking Sergeant Keener of the Gaston Police Department for reminding me, even as a city councilman, no matter how tired you are or no matter how close to home you are, uh, you still have to stop at stop signs. So, thank you, Sergeant Keener, for that. I really appreciate it. And, uh, the other thing I'll say is, uh, the, the one thing I want to explain, we passed a couple of resolutions assessing nu- nuisance abatement liens on property, and they're pretty significant amounts of money, $5,190, $3,495. Basically, all we're doing there is where the city has filed a nuisance against a property. The property was abandoned, it was never taken care of, it was never addressed, so the city actually ends up going down there and tearing down the house because, or the structure, because it's a public health concern, and there's a cost associated with dragging all that material away. Um, unfortunately, the city doesn't collect hardly anything out of these things because they just get assigned to the property. And in a lot of instances, the cost to demo the house is more than the value of the dirt that the house sits on, so it gets filed as a lien against the property and it sits there forever, and the city never gets paid back. But if somebody in the future ever does buy that property, they have to satisfy that lien, and the city gets the money back. So, um, it's kind of more of an administrative issue. And then, um, let's see. Oh, the last thing I'll say is to Mr. Settles, uh, I agree with you on the use of cameras as a technological advancement to deal with some of the issues we have in this community, and I think we should be looking at more technologically advanced ways to address old problems, um, in this community. So, I'll just leave it at that. I agree with you. That's all I have, Madam President.
Councilman Cannon.
Mr. Settles, I think that, if I'm not mistaken, when we looked at that garden terrance, we was gonna try to tear those things down. And I think one reason we let the developers try to move on that was because it would, after we tore all those buildings out, it would fill our landfill up. And our Puddle Works Department would take up a lot of their time just to push all those buildings down there. And I think that's one reason we've let these developers, these three different developers, try to make a go of that right there, if I'm not mistaken. But it seems like, you know, they're, it'll probably come back before this council again, probably. That's all we got.
Councilman Worthy?
Yes, uh, first, talking about the lien that we put on the property, like Councilman Wilson said, most of the time, the, uh, the, uh, when you knock the house down, and like, we got that one in District Three right now, it's $5,000, $5,100. But the problem we have, once we put that lien on it, and then somebody want to buy that property, they not gonna be willing to spend that $5,100 to satisfy that lien. So, that's the problem we have. Seeing, what we really want to do is get the properties back on the tax road. So, uh, we may need to look at trying to do something different on that, because I know I've had several like that in, in, in District Three, and I'm sure y'all probably had something like that too, where they want to really buy the property, but they got to come up with that $5,100 to pay to the state first, and then the state sends the money back to us. So, uh, that's a problem. And then, two, you know, we've, we've been having a lot of crime, so, uh, I want to say thank you to Mr. Joseph Cole, who's called the meeting for, uh, tonight at six o'clock at Mount Piranha Baptist Church there on North Ninth Street. We asked anybody and everybody to come. It's open to everybody. We, we, we gotta talk about how, uh, we could solve the problems that we have in, in Gaston for us crime. You know, we love to have the parents involved and come out, and anybody that's got any ideas, because God knows we can't stop it as a council, as a, as an administration, and as the police. We got, you know, police officers too, but they cannot be everywhere. So, we're gonna sit down and we're gonna talk about it. Six o'clock tonight, Mount Piranha Baptist Church. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Madam President. Just one point, uh, to piggyback off of Councilman Wilson's comments about the Human Relations Committee. Um, there, there are five, um, target areas that the committee agreed to address. Uh, we have made it to item four. So, when we meet the next time, we'll be discussing, uh, the fourth item, and then, of course, we'll have a follow-up meeting to discuss item five, and, and then a final, uh, meeting for this committee to present recommendations to the mayor and the council. So, um, and I, I mean, just as a, as a point to note, uh, item five is culture and monuments, and some of those things are kind of highlighted within, within that. So, there are a number of things that we identified that we'll talk about, but, uh, that, that'll be kind of the last topic of discussion for the committee. That's all I have.
Uh, and Mr. Cole, I will talk with the legal department, maybe he would have answers for the questions that you have. And so, therefore, you can, you know, get answers from the legal department. Um, my, uh, comment is, uh, we got notice, or I'm giving everybody a notice that grass cutting letters will go out next Monday. Grass cutting letters will go out next Monday. Uh, that will be the only letter that you'll get for the next twelve months. And so, if you don't do anything, they're gonna go, come out and cut your grass, and that will be, uh, charged. So, you need to know that grass cutting will start, uh, or the letters will go out, and then they'll start cutting the grass. So, cut your grass if you own lots or anything, so that, uh, I believe, how much is it a lot now? Is it $250 if the city comes out and cut your lot?
With administrative costs, it's, it's around $2.25.
$2.25, I was giving you an extra $25. Uh, um, is there anything else coming for the council?
I'll go down.